Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have one discussion item on tonight's agenda, and that is consideration of a moderate income housing application with the city of El Dorado, Kansas. David, Scott, could you guys give us a rundown?
So last week, last Monday, the commission was considering two applications for its moderate income housing application for the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation's process. The city can only submit one application, so the commission had to discuss that about that and elected to table the item to tonight's meeting to allow Commissioner Leachman to participate in the conversation and also make a decision. The city has to make a decision tonight because the application is due to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation by the 15th of November. On Sunday, I was informed by Dean Construction LLC that they are going to withdraw their application, and so tonight, the commission has the application from RSH Holdings LLC to consider for the MIH application, and so we can take any questions that you may have with respect to that.
So since RSH is here, since Leon or Commissioner Leachman was not present at the last one, and I think the last time probably Leon, you heard anything about this was when they came to us in May of this year, so can we have RSH kind of give us a presentation, give us a rundown on what you guys have, and we can start there so that we have all the information in front of us?
Somebody's got to be it.
Hi, so Angie Johnson with RSH Holdings LLC. So we're looking at, we were initially looking at a 40-unit project, Old Milhouser Road Edition, Outland Edition. When we had the kind of preliminary plat drawn, he did make some of the lots smaller, and we still thought it was 47 then, so we still thought we could get 40. We have looked at it again with Scott, he brought some concerns to us, and Jake McClure with Allen's Excavating and RSH is here as well, so we looked at a lot of the infrastructure and the drainage issues, and to be on the safe side, we're going to apply for 35 units. It's still possible we could get a few more in, but we're going to reduce our number on our application to 35. We are planning on using Skyline Modular Homes on foundation in these lots. We may do a section, we kind of like the idea of transitioning into some housing, so we would like to possibly look at doing a few duplexes on, when you first come in from the south, I guess, and then transitioning to some modular units, and then transitioning further into maybe some traditional stick-built homes closer to Third Street. So depending on how that plat ends up laying out eventually, you know, we want to keep our options open, and I think KHRC in the past has been pretty flexible to changes along the way. This is just a, you know, kind of an initial proposal right now, although we've spent a lot of time looking at it, and we really feel confident with where our numbers are and what we think we can do. So one thing I have added since last time I spoke to you is Skyline has given me some quotes on some other modular products, so I do think we're going to be able to have a house in there in the $206,000 range, all the way then up to that 237.5. So it would give residents a little, you know, more of a scale. So the higher end was around 1,670 square feet, the lower end model would be around 1,300 square feet. So anyway, that would be where we would come up with those price differences. Everything is on foundation, everything's going to be sod and sprinkler, they're going to look very nice, two-car garages, safe room. So we're really excited about the project. We've been wanting to do a project like this since 2019, so we've spent a lot of time looking at it, and we're excited about the opportunity to be in El Dorado, so.
And you have someone?
I do, sorry. So I have Jennifer and Mike from Skyline, and they have a short, like, eight-minute presentation on modulars, how they're set, how that process works, if you'd like them to present.
You know, Leon, I had a chance to meet him before the meeting. Are you guys interested in learning a little bit more about what we're talking about out there?
I am. What's interesting to me is modular homes have came so far
Yes.
From what they used to be. I have some good friends that had one on a basement out in western Kansas where we used to stay, and nice home.
Very nice, yeah. And we're excited about the prospect of moving them along very quickly. So they'll all be constructed, obviously, in the factory, protected from elements, and we'll do the foundation, and then they'll be ready to go, and you'll see this process on the video that they have, if you're interested in seeing it. It's very, very good.
Sure.
Okay, well, I'm going to turn it over to them, so Jennifer and Mike.
Good evening.
Thanks, Angie.
So I am Jennifer, I'm the sales manager at the Skyline. We're located just about an hour south of here. I'm assuming I can just plug in?
Maybe.
And go?
It's technology, so.
Just click the blue button.
The blue button.
On the screen?
No.
No?
Hold on a minute.
Yeah.
And I can also...
Yeah, just go back to your browser, click this, or you could just, yeah, throw it up in there.
Throw it up here. Okay, thank you.
Is there sound?
Do we get sound out of this thing?
I don't know if sound will be possible. Howard?
Well, it shows it down at the bottom.
Howard's saying no, the sound is not possible.
You don't have a speaker.
You don't have a speaker? Because there's no...
Well, hey, you know what, you can walk us through it.
Okay.
Have you guys seen this video before there?
We have. I could also, if you don't mind, we'll play it, and I can play the audio through my phone.
Sure.
If you could put it right there next to the microphone?
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we're working.
You know, being in this business, if you're in this business, you're in this business for, for the love of it. Because this is a hard business. It's very time-consuming, it's very capital-intensive. When you can actually have a finished home site and do whatever pad prep you need to do for your foundation, and the next day have a home set on it, part of that for you is that incredible amount of satisfaction that you are actually almost to the finish line, even though you just started. Leverage the advantages of the Genesis Homes prefabricated building process to deliver the quality and curb appeal your home buyers expect while streamlining and solving the challenges associated with the traditional site-built development model. Ideal for single-family rental, build-to-rent, and for sale developments. The Genesis building process is everything you know about home building, only easier and faster. Utilize our innovative home-building methods to turn your investment into profit over expedited timelines with greater predictability and fewer headaches. Here are some advantages you can expect when you work with Genesis. It's an incredible benefit to be able to now streamline and simplify down what has to happen on to finish and complete a home so that I can get it sold and then turn keys over to a buyer and keep moving. It's a beautiful, beautiful process. Our architects have your designs covered. Genesis models are derived from a hassle-free core of pre-designed floor plans that come in a range of sizes and aesthetic features, which can be built to suit many development scenarios.
A selected materials that were not only in trend but fit the area that the house was being built. That comes from the floor to the cabinets, countertops, ceramics, interior, exterior paints, every house. I walk out of every room, and when I walk out the front door, I am just like, I love this home.
Architectural and engineering fees are included in our program. Our homes are designed for your market, and when completed to Genesis standards, can be virtually indistinguishable from the site-built alternative.
When designing a Genesis home compared to what I would consider a core standard HUD home, Genesis home typically brings in more architectural features like site-built garages, porches, higher pitch roofs, larger eaves. It really makes a home more architecturally compliant with more traditional houses.
We work while you work. The site prep procedure is nearly identical to that of the traditional site-built process with one important time-saving distinction. We will be building your homes while you are preparing your job site. I could actually coordinate my finished lot timelines and pad prep with delivery of the house. The beautiful thing was, is upon completion of a home site, I could literally have a house delivered the next day. You cannot do that in stick-built construction, and under any circumstance. So it saves me a tremendous amount of time and energy and coordination because while I'm doing what needs to be done on the finished lot side of things, the factory is working on behalf of the vertical side of it and getting the home done. No need to worry about weather delays, and we reduce the need for onsite labor. These benefits help to expedite your timelines. We complete the majority of the building process inside our climate-controlled factories before your homes arrive onsite. This process is faster, more predictable, and more sustainable than the site-built alternative. It also has the added advantage of allowing us to perform numerous quality inspections before your home even leaves the factory. We also simplify the code inspection process. Our homes are built to the National Manufactured Housing HUD code with the IRC state code and pass inspection before they arrive on your job site.
We have floor plans and designs that have to be approved by HUD. We have inspections that go on in every single station of the production process, meaning that a supervisor that oversees a station has to acknowledge that everything has been completed to the required level. We have third-party inspectors within the facility that will walk every house at least once, but can actually inspect any house at any time in the process, and as many times as they want, and then we go through random, periodic, full-blown plant inspections and audits on a regular basis. So when you have all that in place, the tolerances for errors, misses, defects are greatly diminished.
Because our home construction timeline is concurrent with your site preparation, our homes typically can be delivered as soon as you can have the site ready. Arranging delivery is as simple as communicating with our transportation coordinator at our manufacturing center. Once the house arrives onsite, your local installation contractor will take delivery of your home sections and set them. The setting of a house onto a prepared site can be achieved in just a day or less. When you build with Genesis Homes, you can accomplish in a single day what would otherwise take weeks to achieve using the site-built construction alternative. Ongoing construction noise and neighborhood disruption can be a pain point for both developers and communities. These factors are largely mitigated in the Genesis building process because most of the construction occurs in our factory. When our method is followed, homes are typically dried in and secured shortly following delivery. This reduces waste and can eliminate the need for onsite liabilities such as loose materials and dumpsters. Once your home sections are delivered, dried in, and secured, your trade contractors take over to bring your home the last mile to completion. Most of the final steps are similar to those found in the typical construction process, including interior finish, exterior work, utility connect, and landscaping. We don't just simplify your building process, we provide simple payment terms to help streamline your expenditures and administrative processes, too. Builders and developers know that there is more work to do after the construction is finished. Our tailored sales materials, web support, lead generation, and marketing assets can help you fast-track your time to revenue. We're a company you can trust. Genesis is the builder-developer brand of champion homes, the subsidiary of the largest publicly traded manufactured home builder in the nation. We've been in the business of building quality homes for over 70 years, with over 40 plants spanning every region of the contiguous United States. We have both the capacity and hard-earned expertise needed to help make your next development project a success. If you're ready to take your projects to the next level with faster timelines, greater predictability, more job site security, reduced noise and waste, and an amazing product that home buyers love, it's time to work with Genesis Homes. Use our resources to discover your path to purchase and begin your relationship with us today.
We also have a short presentation just to kind of go over who we are. As it said in the video, so we are Skyline. We've been here in Kansas since 1959. We started just in south Kansas in Arc City. Our founder actually was just coming through on a train station, and he stopped there and said, hey, this is somewhere on a handshake deal with the city commission. They said, let's start, and they were building within 30 days. But we work here in Kansas and send. At our Kansas facility, we've built over 50,000 homes. We employ 140 employees at our local division. We do a partnership with KDOC, so we have a reintegration program, so a certain percentage of our workforce is with the KDOC, and then, once they finish their sentence, we have a low maximum security, a low-security prison down there in Arc City, or in Winfield, Kansas, that will actually, we do the transportation. When they finish their sentence, we are a reintegration program where we'll actually invite them to come work for us if they stay in the area as well. Our plant currently ships to 13 different states surrounding us, so the same homes we send down into Texas, we send up into Wyoming. As I had kind of mentioned, we build to the state and local IRC code, so it doesn't matter which state it goes into. We do our research and ensure that we're meeting their codes. We're also involved here in Kansas. We serve on the Kansas Manufactured Housing Association. We are heavily involved with the local high schools for their construction pathway committees, and I mentioned the KDOC partnership as well. We are a publicly traded company. We currently have risen to 43 plants with an additional five in Canada. We have a variety of building types. I believe Angie shared a couple of the exterior photos, and I'll just kind of go through what we didn't, a little bit more of the interior as well. I heard that mentioned, I think it was by Yuliana, it's not the manufactured home that you saw back in the '70s. We have brought in a national designer, and that keeps us relevant in our industry, the location, and makes it more the site-built. We do the attached garages built onsite. I know one of the concerns was having a variety within the development, and so that's where Angie is working with us to ensure that we're going to meet her needs as well as yours for this. And this is one of the homes that we have available for tour on our lot in Arc City. I want to invite you down if anyone wants to come tour our facility or actually our homes. We are there, and I'd be happy to take you guys through our plant if you wanted to see more of the manufacturing as well as our finished product. One of the other concern was the financing. Because these are built modular, they are conventional financing, so down payments is always 3%. You still have your fixed rate terms, your regular mortgage insurance companies, it is comparable to the site-built homes. So are there any unanswered questions that you guys have for us today?
I have one question for Scott, though. Scott, you know, in the past, we had a deal where when people bought a new house here in El Dorado, they got tax abates. Will that apply, anything like that apply to what they're doing?
So in their application, they talked to you about some incentives they're interested in, so they're looking at tax credits for their project as well as the moderate income housing grants. Rural housing incentive districts have discussed as well.
Okay.
As far as our NRP rebates?
Is that done? Does that apply there? Do you all have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll sign out of your technology.
Okay. Do I have a motion or some conversation?
Oh, I have questions.
Okay.
I mean, I went through this all over again.
Perfect.
Page one. So I have questions, and some of these questions actually come from telephone calls that I've received. How many different styles are you planning to build? And I did do the virtual tour
Good.
Of the Genesis on
Yeah.
Google.
So right now, in the application we're submitting to KHRC, we are putting in three different floor plans, three different types of modular homes. We're also looking at, like I said, that kind of transitioning to possibly having duplexes at the start, then those
Town homes, that's called town.
Town homes. And then the modular units, and then maybe even transitioning on Third Street to just traditional stick-built and working with a local builder.
Okay, do we have, I know you gave us this last Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have pictures of the three that you're going to do?
Um, no. So I have some, I have some floor plans that I could share with you. Like I said, they were 1,300 to the 1,600 square feet.
I think this, the one on the front of your application is the one that's the virtual tour on the right side.
Right, so that's the Genesis model. The other two...
Will you help me find my model numbers to help with what's in here? Now...
That was on the back of what you gave us Monday.
Are those all Genesis? Or is the...
I would be...
Okay. I have them in here somewhere.
I might not have access to the ring rings.
Okay, 4712M.
It's one of them. So this is one ring ring, and then, of course, we still have the site-built garage.
Is that one of them?
This is one of the floor plans, and this is the standard, so as she adds dormers, porches, the site-built garage, that's when it turns into more of what you see on this page, if you have one of these.
And how many square feet is that one?
It is 13.
1369.
And that contains a, we always call them freddy room. Is that a safe room?
Yeah, so those are going to be in the garage.
Okay.
Yeah, and so this is the lowest-end one that we have been looking at. So this would be that all-in to the consumer, like 206,000.
Six.
And then the other one is... So it's just a little...
Not the same one?
So this one is the different, main difference is going to be your size, so this one comes in at 1,474 square footage.
Okay, more square footage.
So we've linked in the home to try to keep the price point, but also you're going to have the more square footage to give the variation. But again, as she does her site work, flipping the orientation of the home, out of the garage on the left instead of the right, in line or in front, that's where we're going to get some of the differentiation, so it's not the cookie cutter.
Now, if somebody were to buy this before it was finished, could they add, change the flooring, change the coloring?
Yes, so we are currently working in the city of Augusta to do a lot split. We own a lot on Custer Lane, and so we're looking at doing a lot split on that lot so that we can bring in a Genesis, which is the higher end, and then bring in one of the smaller ones so that we can presell, and then that will give people a chance to walk through, see it in person. We can always take them down to Skyline to walk it as well, and then, yes, there are options on colors, floor type, upgrades, things like that.
And I also see on a couple of the homes, Shenute and Overland Park, there's brick or stone options.
So a lot of that is for the foundation work, they'll put the brick or the stone to give it the more site-built feel.
Okay.
And that's site work that can be added.
Right. Okay, you've already said, playing with my hair ring and it fell out, you've also talked, you've already talked about sod and sprinklers. Page 28 of your application is the lot design showing the streets.
So the...
What I want to know is, looking at it as an eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet of paper, is the top north?
Well...
Yeah, north is right there.
Can I come look at the one in the back?
Yes.
It's a little dog-eared, but...
So first, this is...
Okay, so this is third down here. So this is central.
Right. So we're talking about doing some duplexes, like, along in here, and then kind of the mall.
So where's Milhouser?
Right here.
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. So you come in this way?
And this is...
And can, do they exit over, can they exit here on Village, or is that a dead end?
No, this is that end. So what we're talking about, we're talking about, this has to be reconfigured.
Okay.
So there's going to be some options there, and Jake is going to take the lead on that and go through a different engineering.
Okay, so basically, right now, we have two entrances, off the third and off the central.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Milhouser runs next to Stevens' sons and the Super 8. It's already there.
Okay, I drove out and thought I might, you know, meander up the road, but my car basically sits on the highway, so I, I didn't do that.
That's a good idea.
Okay. I think those are all my, make sure I do the one on the phone call this morning.
I wanted to mention, after watching the video, it reminded me to tell you a few things. So this does come with a seven-year warranty, so that's going to be another benefit to the end consumer. That was one of the main things I wanted to share. I really feel like that all-in price, that point that we're giving them is more turnkey than some, you know, a lot of times you're getting just the house for the 240, so we're hopefully going to give them a more turnkey experience.
So when you say slab build, or stick build, are you going to do that?
No, we would be working with a local builder.
I'm done asking questions.
Leon, you got anything?
No.
Great. Kelly, you got anything? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here again.
Sure.
Do we have a motion to move forward or not?
I move to accept the application from RSH Holdings LLC as the city of El Dorado's application to the Modern Income Housing Program and authorize the city manager to submit a resolution on behalf of the city.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say, I think we've had really good conversation around this at both the meetings, and good information brought to us at both meetings that we've had. I'm hopeful that if we move forward with this, that we have great success with this, and we continue addressing the housing needs in El Dorado. David mentioned some things that we, as a commission, have to start, I think, talking about beyond MIH as we move forward with finding, creating ways to address some of our housing needs. So glad we've got this before us tonight, and there's no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, aye. Motion carries, 401.
Just as a reminder, this, you know, ultimately, if they do get awarded, there will be a reset of the process and plan process, so.
For sure. And this, and I guess, to that point, this is us just hoping to advance the application. I mean, it's got to be approved at the state to move forward as well, so. Again, I appreciate y'all being here, staff. I appreciate you guys coming in on this for a special meeting, and, and, commission, thanks for being here for more conversation. Seeing that there's no other items on the agenda for tonight, I'd consider motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.